These meetings are recorded. I'll take a motion from Joe, seconded by John on the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? There is one, eighty-one P. One Richard Street.
Good evening. My name is Byron Andrews. I'm with Andrews Survey and Engineering. We're representing Lisa Ferrucci. Mrs. Ferrucci owns some property on Richard Street, One Richard Street. Currently, she -- this is the property that she owns. She wants to create one buildable lot, Lot One, on the north end of the property. It would have nine thousand square foot of area, ninety feet of frontage, and the remaining land would be combined into one parcel. The zone is RA. Minimum area is eight thousand square feet and eighty feet of frontage. So we're ten feet -- we have ten feet additional frontage and one thousand square feet of additional area atop -- greater than the minimum for the zone.
Any questions from the board? A pleasure of the board.
Make a motion. We have the planned assign, the eighty-one P.
Motion by Joe to approve the eighty-one P, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. For the planned public hearing at seven oh one and seven oh two for F and D Central Realty Corp., for the Bear Hill Village, the applicant has requested an extension to the March seventh meeting. Again, for the public hearing on the affidavit, excuse me, the application of F and D Central Realty for the Bear Hill Village, Casey Drive and Beaver Street, the applicant has requested a extension to March seventh. A pleasure of the board?
Make a motion. We accept the extension. However, I'd like to also send a letter along with that to the applicant and his engineer that this would be the last one that the board would entertain. I don't think it's fair. This is the third time that we've had people come from that area to -- at least the third time that I remember for the meetings, and we've had to tell them that we're not having anything. So if they can't come and be ready at the next meeting, I believe it's only fair that they resubmit and we'll start the process all over again.
Motion by Joe to extend the -- to extend the -- grant the extension, I should say, with a follow-up letter to the applicant and their engineering that this will be the final extension. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Yeah, yeah. That's fine. You couldn't handle it. That brings us to the continued public hearing on the application of R and D Management Corporation for a special permit regarding a twenty percent reduction in required off-street parking at one twenty, one twenty-eight Medway Street, assesses map forty-three, block zero, Lot ninety-five B, IB zone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members.
Evening.
I'm Al Rossi. I represent the applicant, R and D Management. I didn't expect to be making a presentation this evening, but I was just informed that my attorney, Joe Antonellis, had an emergency and is obviously not here tonight. But since I have my architect from Cleveland here, my traffic consultant, my site engineer, myself coming up from New York, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a presentation tonight to follow up on where we were the last time. It is my understanding that you should have been in receipt of some additional information from the last time we had our hearing and the continued decisions. That additional information should have been a updated traffic report from World Tech. It should have been a letter from Stop &amp; Shop, the announced anchor for our shopping center who is taking sixty-eight thousand square feet that advise the planning board and the planner that they are satisfied with the parking configuration and that they will advise their employees to park in the rear. And I know these were concerns from the last time we appeared before you. Also, the site plan has been modified to show the concern. As to, as you own, that we have the cockerels shown on the site plan. They're now shown. Stop &amp; Shop requires six of those cockerels. The tenancy that we're aware of would have that. Based upon that, Steve from Allen and Majors will say that we have a physical count of
Seven sixty-seven.
Seven hundred and sixty-seven parking spaces physically on the shopping center. That amounts to, and our traffic consultant will further elaborate, that amounts to a ratio on its surface of at least four per thousand based upon GLA. But what I'd like to do is, and I think the last time we were here and it was concerned about the additional variance we were seeking from the ten percent, I think that site plan had a sixteen percent variance. But before I get into that, I'd like Mike Pompeo to explain to you and just paraphrase and summarize for your benefit what he put in his report and the basis and genesis of that study.
Now, just so the board notices what all they've got there in the packet. The packet labeled "Public Hearing Number Three" includes the basic packet from last meeting as well as the information that Al just mentioned. Sorry. Go ahead.
Mike?
I'm Mike Pompeo, World Tech Engineering Traffic Consultant for the project. So as you see in the memo, we had done a parking calculation for the site plan that was dated January twenty-fourth. There have been some revisions to that site plan that Steve will go through. So according to the memo, based on that site plan, the site consisting of approximately one hundred twenty-eight thousand square feet total of retail, that's including the shopping center, fourteen thousand one hundred forty-five square feet of restaurant plus two thousand two hundred sixty square foot coffee shop with drive-through and approximately two thousand square feet of office would have a site requirement, a parking requirement of seven hundred fifty-eight. Based on the ULI, shared parking methodology, provides base ratios for each use, which may be further reduced by, based on time of day, because different uses peak at different times. We've done that calculation just with the base ratios, not even reducing for time of day. So assuming all the uses peak at once, that would have a parking requirement of seven hundred fifty-eight on a weekday and seven hundred forty-three on a weekend. Based on the current site plan, where some restaurant spaces reverted to retail, requiring less parking, the actual parking requirement would now be six hundred eighty-two on a weekday and six hundred eighty-nine on a weekend. So, you know, far less than what's being provided on the site.
Now, I realize that last time we met there was concern that sixteen percent is excessive. It may not reflect a true mixed-use concept. But again, Mike in his study has confirmed that based upon the community, I'm sorry, shopping center we have, that that ratio and the physical count is okay. Looking at, however, the, again, appreciating concern of the board and looking at our use here, there was a comment that we didn't have enough of office space in the use. So I'm proposing tonight, in the hope that we can get acceptance from this board, a further reduction in what we came in last time. That specific reduction would be, is originally, or the last time for the sixteen percent, I'm rounding up the numbers, approximately sixty percent variance. We had a restaurant here of three thousand square feet and two retail spaces where Bookaboo's was. And this was a proposed restaurant here. We did have outdoor patio here, and we had a restaurant in line. I'm proposing tonight that we eliminate the restaurant here and just go back to office. Then four thousand square feet of office, we think we can get four thousand square feet of office here and one retail.
Al, for clarity, are you talking the original two plus four? Or are you calling it four total now?
Four thousand total.
Total, okay.
So I'm proposing that our site plan
It's in the north addition.
I just remember the last time it was two thousand, and I can't see that for the life of me.
Yeah, let's have them distribute the new plan.
Yeah, this I can see.
Al, just for clarity purposes, how many restaurants are you proposing outside seating for? Just the one now?
Outdoor seating.
Just the one restaurant?
He gave me two.
Yeah, there are two.
Oh, they actually.
Coffee shop has an outdoor seating.
I didn't know that.
So there's three.
Three with outdoor seating.
Three. And we all realize that I don't have to elaborate to you that outdoor seating is only effective for a portion of the year. I don't think anyone's going to be sitting out there when it snows on the ground or a night like today. Unfortunately or fortunately, all these national retailers require outdoor seating as part of the ambiance that they're looking for. So even if it's a coffee shop, I'm sure you've go through town and been many places, they have a little patio, outdoor seating. People could go out, relax, and read the newspaper, that type of stuff. So it's not something we propose, it's something they
It's a shame because we're not in Florida. And unfortunately, it's a shame because we're not in Florida, and you're taking up parking spots for something that you're lucky if you can use six weeks out of the year. I mean, it's foolishness.
It's their criteria and a requirement.
It's just foolishness.
Just for clarity's sake, I don't know that it was clear, but Al's proposal now is the three restaurants that he was speaking of do still have outdoor seating, but the other two restaurants are no longer part of the mix.
No, you converted that to office.
Right, so there are only three restaurants now instead of five.
Last time we were here, for the sixteen, whatever it was, percent, we had a three thousand square foot restaurant with outdoor seating. We had six thousand with no outdoor seating. We had twenty-eight on two hundred in here. Nothing's changed on the end cap of this spot.
In terms of the drive-through and so on and so forth.
Proposing tonight, so we can move forward and get on the construction, which we're ready to do, is that Bookaboo stay where it is. We have a restaurant here with outdoor seating. This, go back to our original proposal, which is retail and office, but office now be bumped up to four thousand square feet and two thousand square feet of retail to make this. In the inline, no restaurant here other than what you see on the end cap. One is a restaurant, quote unquote. The other one is a coffee shop with a drive-through. So I don't know if you classify that as a restaurant. It doesn't affect the physical count of seven hundred and sixty?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven parking spaces, which is four to one. And in that calculation, you have to calculate parking for the patio, which I just explained is a portion of the year. And I think with that mix, the ratio, the parking variance would come to like thirteen percent and change. And Steve could tell me that. So really what I'm here tonight is to modify a plan in the hopes that I can secure approval. We're ready to start construction. We have tenancies ready to go, and they have a timeline for opening. The cockerels are shown. I provided the board with evidence from the major anchors saying that they're satisfied with the count and the configuration. And another thing, I'd just like to comment, take another minute of your time, if I may, you've got an agenda here. You know, it's just weather-wise, everyone wants to get on. Every one of our tenancies, when we sign a lease with these folks, the site plan is part of the lease. They all have their criteria. So there's nothing hidden here. And obviously, you're dealing with national retailers like Stop &amp; Shop. They've seen the site plan. They have their criteria. They have stores all over the East Coast, down to Washington, DC. They're totally satisfied with what we have provided them or else we wouldn't have signed the lease. They wouldn't have given us their acknowledgement they're acceptable. Same thing here. These guys here are national retailers. The site plan is all part of the documentation. It's a lease. Again, they're not investing millions of dollars for a plan that doesn't work for them. So just by the fact that you have a signed lease with these folks and they're coming into the shopping center, they're satisfied with the configuration and the parking count. And again, not to reiterate, but overall, it's at least a ratio of a physical ratio of four point zero. And the spaces in the back, again, they'll tell their employees that Stop &amp; Shop, they're going to park in the back. So that all helps. So I urge the board to make a positive decision. Tonight, we're ready to go forward.
Can you give us the actual percentage?
The actual percentage, actually, there was a slight error in that drawing. I put the restaurant at six thousand. It made it to seventy-one hundred.
It's the existing Bookaboo's building, which is seven thousand zero fifty square feet. We're not knocking the building now. We're redoing the building.
You're just changing, you're just changing tenants is all you're doing, basically.
So it's not six, it's seven.
And outside.
Thirteen point six percent.
And you serve outside.
Was it? I'm sorry?
Thirteen point six percent.
You're going to be serving outside.
They're going to have an outdoor patio.
Thirteen point six instead of thirteen point zero.
And that, and that's assuming total rental area for tenant A, not no reduction for
That's correct. We did an alternative calculation that's on there that takes out, on those two drawings that I handed you, one of them shows the actual fixture points in the supermarket, the shaded areas of the areas that customers don't go into. They're just back of house. So an alternative way to calculate is take that out, and we've got more than enough parking if you take that out. But we're here seeking the variance, the waiver down to the sixteen, thirteen point six instead of sixteen, which is twenty percent, which was the
Well, the original was twenty.
The original was
It was twenty. You calculated down to sixteen, so now you're here down to say thirteen point six.
Okay. So your packet has both alternative methods for the parking calculation?
I understand the argument.
Just for comparison.
I understand the argument that when you withdraw
Is that that spot right there?
Specific to, we'll just use Stop &amp; Shop for a second. When you withdraw the actual coolers that are not leased, I mean, the leasable space in terms of what you get. But in terms of customers, obviously, you can't fit a customer in a freezer. So clearly, I understand.
You might not want to.
Let's keep it clean. So basically, I understand that there's an argument that obviously, when you calculate it
And just as
Just so you know, sir, on their fixture plan in the supermarket business, they always, they have a ledger that gives them all their, all their liars. How much shelving, how much for all their departments, how much is the goods floor area, how much is the sales floor area on their document that you don't have because we just took their fixture plan and showed you the outboard. They're at a seventy-thirty. So thirty percent of their sixty-eight thousand is back room. And that's, that's pretty well That's pretty well, there's a big back room with the corners, the storage, the, you know, all the prep, all the stuff in the back. So just for your comfort, in a supermarket, it's that type of ratio. In a dry goods, obviously, it's not that big. They don't have all the prep departments. It could be ten percent or fifteen percent, depending upon who the retailer is. In a supermarket, it's a seventy-thirty. So seventy percent or thirty percent, which is not even showing here, is back room, no people go, no customers.
Right.
Okay. Before you
I think Mr. Rossi hit the high points as to what we're doing with the switch, how we've got to where we are right now.
Before I open up to the board, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else or
The only one I have is Don Alexander. He came from Cleveland and
Ah, jeez.
And he is a Patriot fan, though.
Okay.
All right, so he's welcome. He's welcome here.
Now we know, now we know where the bad weather came from.
He's just here to testify that he's, that he, let him testify that what he does and how many shopping centers and that what you see here is normal.
Good evening. Don Alexander with Hirschman Architects. We're a national retail firm. We do work in all forty-eight states in the continental U.S., primarily retail and shopping centers just like this. So what we see here is consistent with what we do across the country as far as parking count to four per thousand. That's becoming a norm, actually, across the country. A lot of municipalities used to be five per thousand and have been reducing that to get less impervious, so.
Right.
There's no change in the impervious because you've got buildings, but that's besides the point. They've added some green.
More than they had, more than they had today. So again, I don't disagree with you, but more than they have today. Questions from the board?
Yeah.
Dave?
You're going to deny it from the shore. We can't sign this plan without
I, okay, I'll address that. I did bring over to Sewer Department yesterday a report and all the revised plans that he was looking for. Some of his comments, slope of the pipes, we've addressed them all. We have a minimum of one percent. I sent him the information on the pumps to show how we could reduce the flows coming off the site. I gave him the calculations for existing condition flows versus proposed flows to see where the difference is and sent him the details for the pump station and all the equipment for it. I did not have a chance to catch up with him this afternoon, but all that, everything that he asked me for was in the package that I dropped off at his office.
Again, until we get approval from the Sewer Department, no way I'll vote this.
Larry, have you heard from
I understand you need it, but
But no, but certainly you could do it subject to
Subject to command. I think this, I think there was too many questions that
Again, I have no idea in terms of the Sewer Board.
Again, I
I have no problem satisfying any of the issues of your Sewer Department. Pump station here is being totaled. It's a brand-new pump station.
That's right.
And I realize that your Sewer Department may have a question as to the timing of release, so it doesn't overload.
See, again, we would, I can't speak to their concerns around it, but Larry may be able to fill it.
The biggest, the biggest problem is the flow going in, and it's going into the four ninety-five of Merchant Station, which I go, it's, it's going to have to be oversized.
That could be easily due by oversized the
But that's not, this board's decision, you have to get an approval from the Sewer Board.
That's not a problem.
Can I make a practical suggestion? The Sewer Board typically meets the third Tuesday, which we're going to be meeting the third Tuesday of this month. And we're meeting here, they're meeting upstairs. So to the extent that you can get on that agenda and get that worked out, at least as the soonest possible time that something might come out of that would be the twenty-first of this month. So that would be one solution. The other solution, which might be a little bit more realistic, would be the first meeting of next month.
I couldn't because I can't speak to the Sewer Board's concerns.
Hopefully by then, you would actually have something from the Sewer Board. At least I could get something from the director. So my suggestion to you, Al, would be to continue the hearing until the March seventh meeting, and that'll give everybody time to hopefully get everything wrapped up, and we might even get at least an email from the Sewer Board.
I would appreciate if I can get a decision on the parking variance tonight. The sewer issue is not a problem.
Well, it's not a variance. It's a, it's a special permit to reduce
Right, but that has no, no bearing on us satisfying the needs of the Sewer Department, which may be a wet well. My engineer is local. He can address that, and he can get a letter from the director saying that. And the site plan may not be signed until that, but at least I can get through this phase of the process.
Any other concerns from the board?
No, I have no problem with that.
The other concern that I had last night was also the snow. Where's it going?
I think you showed that.
We have that plan.
Winter like this, we want the worst.
Yeah, well, I like
It's coming in Thursday.
That's why I'm leaving tomorrow.
You weren't here two years ago.
I hear we're getting ten inches in New York, so
Yeah, they were following ten here.
Yeah, all right. You had your parade today, so who cares about tomorrow?
Be seventy tomorrow, sixty tomorrow.
This is good.
Part of the site plan package was a snow storage plan. And basically, we were using all the areas around the perimeter of the site, all the islands, to store the snow. And of course, if you end up with this winter where you have a lot of snow and it starts, you know, impacting the available parking spaces, the snow gets removed. It's not uncommon for it to be pulled off the site and brought somewhere else.
For clarity purposes, can you point out specifically?
Sure. On the plan that was submitted, it was all the hatch areas. So it's these, these islands, around these edges through here, around the front, these islands.
That's what I'm confused about.
Aren't they all planted?
They are, they are planted, but they're, but they're trees and low annuals, so they'll, they'll come back.
But how wide are they?
I mean, the islands are minimum ten feet and most of them, and a lot of them are fifteen feet wide.
All right, you got to back up because specifically the one that's adjacent to the cemetery?
This one right here?
No, the west.
Way up there, yeah, that one.
Nothing there.
But you put, but you did point that out. That's why, that's why I asked you specifically to show. Because that one, we told you from day one you were not going to use.
That is not. This one through here and here and the islands through the middle, not directly in front, but the ones along the edges.
Again, with national retailers, you have to clear the parking space. We have, we have contracts with snow removers. So they're there. I'm sure when any commercial shopping center, the snow has to be moved before they open the business. You can't take away the parking spaces. We contract out. All I, my only other comment was that the snow removal plan, whatever was shown here, was previously approved by this board.
Yeah, but that was before you asked for an up to twenty percent reduction. So you have to understand that, obviously, you're changing, so, you know. It's a valid question.
You have every right to comment again. I'm just, I'm just freshening my memory. Not your memory, my memory, that the only change to the physical thing here is that we put a drive-through here and we took thirty-five hundred square feet away here. And so we can supplement, I guess, or have, or show, provide you guys with a copy of a contract if that satisfies your need. But again, national retailers, first thing they do is they clear the snow.
That, that means nothing. Well, I mean, national, it's the same national retailer that's down at Fortune Boulevard now, and I could tell you right now, they didn't clear the snow, they left it in piles down there. So that, that Well, I've been down Stop &amp; Shop where there's piles of snow in the parking lot, so I mean
I've seen it, Joe. I have.
But again
But it was in a space far away.
But they also have substantial parking, so then in terms of what they're doing, it's not really the same. Because they put it over by the bank where there's actually nothing there.
Right. It's way over to the side.
Just got to be aware that it's, it's tough. And if you want to talk about putting in the islands, call up a contractor, it's the plow of snow.
Yeah, it's
But it's a thing, the biggest thing here
It's tight.
The biggest thing I worry about is the sewer.
That'll be addressed, so.
I mean, obviously, just so we understand each other, I think that you have perhaps some area around the Medway Road. It seems to be, yeah, there's, again
How are you going to move it all that way?
But you don't want to be blocking everything either.
Well, you didn't let me finish, provided you're not blocking the line of sight. But that's only a right turn, right, a right turn exit.
Yes. Yes.
So in theory, you may be able to get away with it. You also may, in theory, have a little area behind the tenant B2 in the rear corner.
No, it's...
Again, I can't...it's not marked on the plan, I'm just looking...
I know, but I'm just saying.
Potential areas.
What's the difference?
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess I...I'm not sure if Stop &amp; Shop changed their national requirements in the past four weeks or not. It was just amazing after we asked that question, Stop &amp; Shop got rid of the corrals that were down at Stop &amp; Shop now, and they cut them in half to match this plan. It just seemed awful strange.
Do you have prototypes, sir? We could show you a copy of the prototype.
I'm telling you, the Stop &amp; Shop that was down there now, it was just right after we asked the question, it happened to be down at Stop &amp; Shop. They took out half the corrals because I went there and said, "I'll put the thing back," and where'd it go? And now we have only six down there now, which matches this. Just seems sort of strange.
I just have...if I could just throw out a question. I understand what you said in terms of Stop &amp; Shop and requiring that their employees park specific to the rear of the building, which...
Why can't we just approve it?
Who am I to say if they're going to or not? I mean, it's not like I'm parking police. I have no idea whose car's who. But I do have a question relative to tenant B2. I'm assuming that the entrances...and again, I have no idea who B2 is, I only know Stop &amp; Shop. That doesn't matter. I'm assuming that the entrances are all in front as they are today. My question is, tenant B2, is it possible to also have a side entrance? Because you have orientation of parking, and I'm just thinking of convenience and ensuring perhaps better utilization of the side and rear parking for customers as well. Now, again, I can also sit here and reference a target, and I'm not just using it because they're here in Milford. I know aside of their building, there's not a side entrance, and obviously cars park there and have no problem walking to the front. I just sometimes get concerned when you show rear parking and hope that it's going to be employee parking, which, like I said, it's a crapshoot, who parks where.
All I can comment on, sir, is that these all require a main door exits for life safety to exiting, so there are doors back here that employees enter, so there is functionality between parking and getting into the building for employees both anywhere along here. I don't know whether the tenant would have a side entrance, their focal point is having a bump out and a bump up here, the same thing here.
Like I said, I just happened to pick that one, and like I said, to your point, there may not be much of a savings in time of...in terms of walking, whether it be on the side or if they have to walk an extra fifty feet, but, you know, people get lazy and henceforth, that's why people park when they're not supposed to, but neither hand are there. Just a thought.
Larry, is there? Through it all, I'm looking at the, you know, the fact that Stop &amp; Shop has some percentage that is not retail, which I'm willing to say is a correct thing. How do we, going forward, Stop &amp; Shop, ten years from now, whenever it is, decides to move out, what does the town have in terms of protection, in terms of change of use? I mean, I have no problem necessarily granting it with that use being in that building being a supermarket, because all supermarkets have that type of setup where they're going to have a significant amount of space not available. But if we just label it as retail or allow that, when it changes downstream, what's the protection that we have if it changed to a full retail use? Is there a way that we can write the special permit such that...
Yeah, you can specify what the...because the particular parking ratios are called out on the site plan in terms of the different square footages, it's...and it talks about tenant A specifically in terms of square footage, and that's been presented as a supermarket. So the decision, you know, between the findings section and the actual conditions of approval, you could specify that. I guess between now and sometime in the future, we might want to take a look at our parking ratios in the bylaw again and be able to potentially address that maybe better than we are now. But by the same token, if you do that, you may want to come back and decide, well, you don't need to issue special permits for more than ten percent parking reductions in multi-use sites, but that's...
Yeah, but it's a lot of times, yeah, it's a lot of times it's tough for us to even know that, and as you get into most retail, there isn't a lot of back room space, so I don't know it's worth the calculation. However, supermarkets are probably one of the last retails that still do a considerable amount of that type of work. So I'm less adverse to doing it, provided we have protection as we do the special permit to say that was a supermarket and that's why we granted it.
Right, and I think you can reference that specific use as well as, for example, possibly referencing these alternative ways of calculating parking, at least for reference purposes. Those could be referenced as submittals, as evidence, so to speak, in the findings.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Larry. With this sign-off for the parking, do we still have an amended site plan that has to be...
Well, that'll be part of it. It's all done together, so, yeah, we wouldn't...
Wouldn't have a separate amendment, okay.
No, it's whatever you decide with the special permit. I think you may still...I don't know if you kept the original draft, but so many things had changed, I didn't include it again. One of the last lines in the findings and the last line in the decision section was that the site plan submitted with the plan, or at least approved with the plan, is sufficient to meet zoning requirements for a site plan under Section 1.15. So it's all wrapped up together.
That's what I wanted to know. Thanks for asking that question.
Any other questions from the board?
Disapprove the plan.
Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion, we continue the meeting at least to...
The seventh night?
Well, I'll give them a shot at the second, the next meeting.
Twenty-first of this month?
Twenty-first, to see if they can get an okay from the sewer. Again, if it's all amended, if it's all amended, the amended site plan and the parking is all one, I can't see doing it.
That'd be the safest way to go. Because you need four votes to give it a...
We do the...
I gotta...well, okay.
I'd like to do it conditionally.
I think if the only holdup is sewer, and again, that's a holdup, I can respect that, but in terms of the abilities and power of this board, I know in the past we've done it subject to approval from the Sewer Board. I don't know why...I think the question... Hold on, I think the question ahead of us is, they asked for a twenty percent. So I think the first question is, are you satisfied with giving them a thirteen point six? That's the one question. Then obviously, the site plan, which is only modified since, slightly since the last plan, and really from, almost from virtually the first plan, not much has changed, except they added perhaps one or two more restaurants and they added a little more retail. But if you think about it, we've already really kind of...
We've hashed it out.
We have, and I don't have a problem with subject to Sewer Board, because I won't sign this thing until they get the approval.
We've done it before with a single, with a single, a single building and the Sewer Board approving it. This is multiple buildings, multiple flows, and I know that they want to have everything right before they okay it, and I just don't want...I don't think that we should do it without their approval.
Can we act on a special permit and not on the site plan? I mean, I believe that's what he was asking for, no?
The special permit part of it is for the parking reduction. Yeah, you can, and then we just have to hold up the...
Well, hold on, okay, okay, hold on one second, though. Okay. Let's be realistic. How big of a problem is Stop &amp; Shop going to be compared for the Sewer Board? I'm just asking. I understand they're going to put a food trap in, obviously because it's a deli and so on and so forth, but is there bigger concern for the restaurants and so on and so forth?
It's all of it. It's the flow, the flow from Stop &amp; Shop should be significant. The flow from the two restaurants...
I just have a...
Is going to be significant.
And I can agree in concept with that, but I can also hear what the applicant came in front of us and said, "If that requires me to do this, that's what I will do. If this requires me to do that, that's what I will do." So unfortunately, I'm listening to an applicant, who, by the way, I have no reason to think he's going to be dishonest and disingenuous, since he's on TV and it's taped, that he made the offering that he will do whatever is required. So again, I'm not trying to hold him up...
Mr. Chairman...
And I'm not trying to be dispolite to you, believe me, I'm just...
Mr. Chairman, I'm a retired general officer of the United States Army with...
And I was not trying to...
Thirty-four years' worth of experience, and my word is my word.
And I respect that, and that's my point, that I don't think you were being disingenuous when you said, "Whatever I need to do..."
We would satisfy whatever the requirements of the Sewer Board.
So I just, I understand what you're saying, but I just, I...
Well, the...
I think I'd like to see what those things are on the plan.
But to the Sewer Board...
In terms of what I'm doing, yeah. I mean, if it's a holding tank, I'd like to know where it's going. I'd like to be able to comment on that.
I don't want to hold them up.
It's a wet well, it's the size of the wet well. It's not another tank. It's the size of a wet well and it's the size of the pumps that regulate the discharge of the flow.
Believe me, I understand.
So it's not another structure and the location is not changing.
But in terms of the action that the board takes, depending upon the kind of conditions you put in a special permit, you may or may not be able to track them if you're waiting for however long it's going to take to get this settled with the Sewer Board by granting a conditional special permit now. What's the notice of decision going to say? Well, yeah, we said it was okay, but we're going to wait for some other board that's outside of our jurisdiction to make the ultimate decision. And to me, that's...I wouldn't want a special permit like that. I would rather have the special permit that says what I had intended to say on this decision, that, you know, the special permit is done based on these conditions, and oh by the way, the site plan we've been looking at all along is automatically considered approved as a site plan under Section 1.15. And then it's all done, you file the notice with the clerk, notice of decision, you wait twenty days, and how's it say, you go, Bob's your uncle. It's all done. So it would be cleaner to continue it until you get something and we know what we're talking about, so we can write it up in the decision. In all fairness to you, I know you want to get an approval, but it would be nice to know what the approval says and what it means, and I'm not quite sure...
I know what it means, sir. It means that I'm going to comply with the requirements, have a professional engineer, we have a whole new pump station, brand new, and he knows that he has to satisfy the Sewer Board here, and he's going to do that. It's going to be contained within the confines of a pump station.
But you're asking this board to issue a special permit and file a decision subject to something that doesn't exist yet.
It does exist.
Which is different than the site plan approval, which you can approve a site plan about an arrangement of stuff on the property that doesn't need to be recorded if it were just a plain old site plan, and it doesn't get to the issue of uses, and then when it happens, I can release a Mylar.
I don't want to have a debate with you, sir, you're the town planner, but the pump station is shown on the site plan, it's a circle on the site plan, it says pump station, the guts and the means and the size of pumps and everything else, it's really not on the site plan. That's a matter of the dialogue between the approving agency and the site engineer.
It's not the pump station that's on the property, it's the pump station down further where the flow's going to go that's going to be effective. This is why the Sewer Department wants to know the flows and to do what they're going to do. I don't...believe me, the last thing I want to do is hold you up.
It might, if they can't take...
But you're not going to be able to get a building permit or anything without the Sewer Department's signature, so by waiting the two weeks...
All right.
Again, I had a motion to continue it all.
I get a consensus, Mr. Chairman and the board, as far as the parking variance?
It's not a variance.
A parking special permit?
A special permit for the parking, but what they...that's not what was the motion. So unfortunately, I gotta stick with the motion.
Well, you don't have a second yet. Motion to...the motion was to continue to the twenty-first.
Right, so just...
Well, I'll make seconds, seeing how we need to discuss it anyways.
All right. Motion from Babe, second from...
We can discuss it at this point.
From Joe, to discuss, I mean, to continue the meeting until the twenty-first.
In general, I'm...
Any discussion on the motion?
I understand where Babe is, and I, you know, I believe he has every right to ask that, and I don't, you know, based on this board, I don't have a problem with that. In terms of the parking, depending on how the thing is written up, I don't have an issue with the parking. I mean, my biggest reason for allowing it is looking at the numbers, and having a supermarket in there, and having, you know, that thirty percent of the space not really being usable, I think it works out, barely, but I think it works out, and so I don't have an issue with the parking. And, you know, I'd like to see how that special permit is actually written up when Larry writes it, because I believe it's important that we specify that, but the general context, I don't have an issue with, if that helps the applicant.
That helps.
I got no problem with the parking.
I have no problem with the parking.
So it appears that the thirteen point six seems more than manageable. The question, obviously, and the reason for the...
We had a motion.
Yeah, for the continuance to the, what was it, the twenty-first?
Yeah, twenty-first this month.
Twenty-first is basically on the premise of sewer. So that allows you, if nothing else, two weeks...
Did you resolve that?
Two weeks to resolve.
Now, the twenty-first?
What I would suggest...
Put it on later, because they're going to be upstairs.
Is that we're going to put you on the public hearing for later, allowing you the opportunity, obviously, to go upstairs and discuss it...
Because they meet upstairs at the same time.
Hopefully work it out with the Sewer Board, since it's going to be the same night.
Can you guarantee fair weather on the twenty-first?
I can guarantee you there won't be a parade, other than that I can't guarantee anything.
We'll see you on the...
I just need to take a motion on the continuance to the twenty-first.
No, on both, you have to take a motion on both.
All right, you have a motion, yeah, she's taking a vote.
Taking a vote.
I mean, sorry, vote, yeah.
All in favor of the continuance to the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Proposed, unanimous. Thank you, see you on the twenty-first.
Gentlemen, thank you, drive home safely.
Yep.
We have a site plan review for 111 Cedar Street. The applicant requests site plan approval to construct an attendant service gasoline station and a five thousand square foot convenience store with drive-through restaurant on the subject property. Attendant service gasoline stations are allowed by special permit in the IB zone, and the ZBA approved the special permit on 10/13/16. The site plan configuration is a result of numerous meetings with staff. The proposed fueling pump islands are centrally located between the convenience store and the street, a separate truck fueling area located on the north side of the site, beyond the drive-through window lanes. Adequate off-street parking and queue lanes are provided, including a separate bypass lane that can also accommodate tractor-trailer trucks. Access to the site is proposed via two one-way thirty-foot-wide driveways. The entrance driveway will be located at the southerly edge of the frontage, separated by an approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-five-foot-long landscape island, and the exit drive at the northern edge of the site. All applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, Larry is recommending approval. The decision is there from the ZBA. Mike, I'll let you go through your concerns or tell me if they've been addressed. The Highway Department has no concerns, other than the road opening permits and trench permits. The Highway Department is recommending adding one additional hydrant approximately one-hundred-and-twenty feet south of the current hydrant?
Fire Department.
That's what I said, the Fire Department.
Said the Highway Department.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Fire Department. The Water Company has their standard letter. Mike, have your concerns been addressed, or what were your concerns that...
Need to be discussed.
The main concern that was taken care of already was the entrance and the width of the driveways on the entrance and the exit. We've worked with the engineer on a couple revisions, and it adequately addresses that concern, which is number one. Patrick, I don't know if you want to go through your presentation and see if we've addressed the other seven or eight comments that I have in here, unless you want me to go through them all now.
Yeah, that's okay. Do you have...
Do you have a half-size print or anything for the members?
Because some of them are.
What I would like to hear is presentation.
I, I don't have anything for the board members.
Oh, boy. Oh, jeez. What I can't say, I always usually say.
Oh, boy. I'll do my best to point everything out. Uh.
I don't need to see it.
Okay.
Yeah, move it up right in front of them. I'm sorry, not Patrick. Can you see on camera?
I can see it on camera.
Well, if the camera can see, well, yeah. We don't want to look at Mike. There we go.
You can see it, you can see it.
You see me every day.
Nothing personal. There. Yeah, they can see it. All right.
Are you going to do the presentation, Mike?
No, I'm not doing the presentation.
What were your concerns? Were they addressed? Or you're going to answer that? I'm sorry.
Well, why don't I first address just a quick little emergency. Joe Antonellis is our attorney, and I just got a text from him a minute ago, oh, probably 30 minutes ago, that he's in the emergency room. So normally, he would be here. Um, and so I'm, my name's Peter Garrett, I'm the owner of Alta Oil, and I have Pat McLaughlin, who's from MHF Design, and Colleen Maderos here as well. And so our plan was, I texted Joe, and he suggested that we run through the plans with you, um, and if, if necessary, we can continue, but we, you know, obviously don't want to waste the board's time. We're perfectly prepared to go through the.
Give you a presentation, sir.
Do your thing.
Joe will still send you a bill, don't worry.
Okay, so, um, thanks again for the record, Pat McLaughlin with MHF Design. So Mike did have some additional comments, so we've received the departmental comments, which we feel are very easily able to be handled administratively, you know, notes to the plans and things like that. Mike had some, some additional comments towards, well, one thing to point out for you guys, and then I think that was the intent of Mike's letter. This site will be in a, in a cut, so this, this site slopes up from, from Cedar Street. So behind the building, actually through the entire rear of the site, will be a, an exposed bedrock cut and a, and a geotech wall. So as part of the site plan submitted for this project, as I understand it, and Mike can help me with this, the submitted requirement would include wall design plans. So for, for your understanding, Peter has, has enlisted the help of.
Nobus Engineering.
Sorry, yeah, Nobus, as our geotechnical consultant, and, and we worked with Nobus since, oh, probably 2015, to do ledge investigations and such, and come up with, with a detailed, but not final, wall design. And that essentially was critical to, to the layout of this site, keeping in mind that there's the existing cell towers that are out there. And so it's our understanding, or what, what we would be requesting from you guys, is potentially an approval that will be conditioned on the fact that those final wall designs be submitted prior to construction, or prior to a building permit, or, or anything along those lines. And we basically needed to, as a, as a design team, get to the point where we, where we hope to be after tonight, in understanding that this is an approved layout and, and site plan before the, the wall design could, could be finalized.
Can I help you out for a second, Pat? Did you reduce the entrance to 30 feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you also take care of the 24-inch corrugated metal pipe?
No, so, so, yeah, so those comments are, are some more administrative-type comments as well that, that Mike had, and so those are.
And the drainage plan in terms of the infiltration on system one, any, have these been addressed? Have you, have you had a, an opportunity to look at his letter? I'm not trying to be fresh, but I'm just wondering.
No, I've reviewed Mike's letter, and I did start to get the understanding from Mike on, on Monday, I believe, that, that you guys were potentially looking for a revised, a fully revised plan. I've never experienced that before, so I was not prepared to.
Yeah, because he's asked.
Fully revise the plans for tonight's meeting. Typically, I would review them, we would get input from the board, and then proceed with, with final revised plans. So I have reviewed everything that Mike has. I don't see any issues with that. Mike had some, some comments about segmentation, about, yeah, doing a visual inspection of the existing drainage that's out there, and those are all items that, that we don't see to, to be.
Transformer pads, on and so forth.
Yeah, so transformer pad.
Catch basins.
Yeah, I, there wasn't anything that came up in Mike's letter that we didn't, that we didn't feel that we could work through, and so I.
Okay, but none of his concerns have been reflected on the plan, is what you're saying?
Only the driveways. That's right. And that was, that was through extensive discussion with Larry and Mike last week.
Okay.
And we did think that that was a crucial item to get on here, not as technical in nature, but we needed to get the driveways into code in order to really have an approval plan.
And just while you're on that topic, just for clarity's sake, one of the devices Mike and I had felt comfortable with having them utilize on the plan is the raised islands, the raised scored islands, to, in effect, extend the, the choker curbing so that their queue actually complies with our 300-foot requirement. Without that raised island, you may want to point it out there, at the entrance to the queue, it doesn't meet the, the queue requirement. So utilizing that device clearly helps separate the queue lane as an entrance to the drive-through. So we were comfortable, at least, with having them show that on the plan. Hopefully, the board will accept that.
Where's the, for the drive-through, where, where is the ordering location?
The menu board is, is here behind the building and this associated.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, it wasn't close to the front section, because it's just going to back up. The, the, just my own opinion, but I will tell you right now, until you get the report for the walls, this board has been, has been pretty adamant about that, in terms of having that stamped drawing, because again, you can't tell me what the site plan looks like until you have a drawing that shows what the slope of those walls need to be or not. So you can't finalize the thing without having, without having design done. We've had many times where people will come in and put a wall up, and then that wall looks nothing like what we end up with when we finally get through it. So the board's been pretty adamant that, that we have, and, and you may have already done that and have enough to be able to produce that, but we've had other people just put walls in, and I have no idea what you have for backup information or not. But it, it becomes an issue, especially with being in Milford and the amount of ledge that we have, and the amount of inconsistency with it, and that if you find an area that doesn't become ledge, and you've, you've decided you have a ledge cut, all of a sudden, you don't, and what do you do? And it doesn't look anything like that. So we, we, me personally, I need to know that, I need to have some comfort level in that, and the, the bylaw was written and is in there for, for a particular purpose. So I, you know, unless that's submitted as part of the package, I, I can tell you everything else about it, but I, but I can't, I can't vote for the plan until that happens.
And I think that was directly what you were trying to advise.
Well, yeah, so that's why I put that in there, because if you, if you go through the package, one of the detail sheets, and in my note, I, I do give them credit for the soil testing that they've done. They definitely have thought it, I can't say all the way through, because it's not 100% done. They have some nice, not a cross-section of the wall, but a cross-section, cross-sectional view of how it's going to work out. So they have thought about it. I don't think it's going to change a whole lot, but that's why I put that in there, just so the board knew that, yeah, it's sitting on a stamped detail sheet, but it's not 100% designed. And that's why I put that in there, so the two parties could effectively communicate. So, you know, you're not looking for an approval, and then you still have, you know, two months for a design.
Right.
So that, that's my point of that note.
That's a good point.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, and again, I suppose, to Mike's point, the information that's really been shared with, with planning and engineering is only to the extent that, that's on the plans, and, and Mike's correct, in that on one of our detail sheets, and I can certainly grab it for the, for the pleasure of the board, is, is a cross-section, and that includes, you know, basically, the, the entire swath that we're trying to account for. So there was, and, and I don't, I, I want to say it's like 500 pages of a, of a Nobus report. Um, you know, I, I even offered to share that with Mike, and then we shared a laugh that, you know, maybe the 500 pages, you know, two days before the meeting wasn't, wasn't something he was going to get through. So we do have quite a bit of, of analysis done. The reason that I would say is that we don't have the, the full analysis, and this goes into really the existing cell facility. So we've been working and are continuing to work with, with those folks as well, and they have their own engineering team that, that Nobus really needs to work directly with. So there'll be a full global stability analysis, is a term that they use, that needs to be performed to confirm everything that has been up to, done up to this point, but that's a process that needed to happen, basically, at this point. So there needs to be specific input in terms of loading and, and different numbers from those guys in order for Nobus to, to finalize where they're at. At that point, we also needed to distribute these same-level detail plans to tho, to those guys, for them to even start to review the work that we've done to this point. So that's essentially where we're at and why we've gotten to being in front of you tonight. So we, we certainly understand your point of view in terms of needing to do that. I guess the hopes were that we, we could get as, as far along with, with you folks in understanding that we have a, a site layout that's approvable and meets zoning code and, and the view of the board. And if, I think if we can leave here tonight with that, then, then we know that we can go ahead and, and finalize that design. So I think just some feedback from you guys in terms of understanding that the layout is where we need it to be granted that the wall works.
You guys are awfully, geez, everyone wants something, geez, huh? You know, we could be jerks, you know what we could be? We could be jerks and say, you know what? Do what we ask you to do, and then we'll tell you yes or no at the end.
Sure.
Does that work for you?
It does, it does work.
No, too dicey. You, you want, you want a little more direction?
Yeah, yeah, we'd love some direction, although we didn't.
I gotta be honest with you, I think Mike's letter captured the feeling of the board in theory, because we're going to obviously go by the letter of the bylaw, okay? And since you've already gotten your approval in terms of, through the zoning board, it's just nothing more than a simple site, is what you're looking for. But like Joe said, in terms of your stone wall, it, it really has to be engineered, and if it's not, then you're not going to get the approval. It's just, Joe, Joe said it accurately. It's not one of these things, build it and we'll cross our fingers and hope it works. And by the way, it's not what we told you it was going to be, but hey, it still works, it looks like something.
The building commission is also going to require an as-built stamped drawing of the wall, too.
I don't, I don't think this is. I mean, other than Mike's comments, I don't think we, I don't have any other additional comments. I think the site works fine the way you have it drawn out. I don't, I don't see any other issues with it.
No, I think, I think the queue line works.
If you're looking for that, yeah, with, with where that is, I think you have enough room for the queuing, it shouldn't affect traffic. So I, I don't, I don't see any other, I mean, I, I know, Mike, if you addressed some of the others, there were a couple in here that, that I thought were important, making sure you figure out something to stabilize the, the access to the cell towers, so that we don't get siltation coming down into your, into that parking lot and stuff needs to be addressed. But i- in, in general context, I, I don't have any other issues, if that, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's really where, where we need to, to get to.
Again, like the last plan, where's the storage going?
That's right. So we need, we, we do know, and that's been a, another item with Larry as well, so I just draw it down in the notes. So we know that we need to, to plan to be at the, the sewer commission in two weeks, and there's been some discussion with, with Mr. Minini in regards to that. So we will be hoping to get their approval in two weeks' time, and so that, that's the next step there. Mike's letter also indicates that we need to go to the, to the Concom, and so that's, that's an upcoming item as well. We have Scott Goddard on board as, as a wetland consultant that will be working with us to, to make that Concom.
I think we need to continue this.
And so, um.
So do you want to have Concom approval before you give approval?
No, what, I, I think sewer is going to be more.
I heard from the meeting before sewer was an issue.
So sewer is going to perhaps be more of an issue to, to certain members. In terms of us, again, I think the, your stone wall.
You have, you have to evaluate that yourself, to be honest.
Is going to be.
What's that?
Concom. To a certain extent, because, I mean, if Concom decides you, tells you, tells you to move something, and you've got an approved plan for months, and then you have to move a parking area.
We're not within, I mean, I mean.
If you're only doing work in a buffer zone, then you probably don't have an issue.
We don't, yeah, we don't.
Yeah, I mean, it would essentially be limited of some regrading over here.
Yeah, so I, I don't.
Flag wetland on the, on the power line property.
To his point, if something gets approved, and then you change it later.
No, 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 I got you.
I gotta be frank with you, I, I think he needs an appreciation in terms of his stone wall design, and, and the ability of getting it engineered. Based on that, it's up to you to decide when you'd like to come back.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we'll be.
I don't, I think, to be frank with you, and I'm speaking for you, I realize that, I really don't think we'll see you in two weeks.
No, I, I would agree.
I think, I think they're going to.
To be perfectly honest with you.
We can't have all of our, we can't have all of our meeting in, in two weeks being based on what's happening upstairs, so it's going to be tough enough. I'd rather, I'd rather put this off to, for the first meeting in March and.
I'd go for the second, because to be realistic, I, I don't know if he's going to be ready.
Well, it's up to that, just to when they think they can be ready, but I, I, I'd rather not do it.
Prelimarily, you're looking for the, the direction of the board, then you've gotten what you, what you're looking for. But if you're looking for a realistic stamped approved signed plan, I don't think you're there yet.
No, we definitely do not have that there. But, but just, you know, to, to get, and I'm sure the board, because you guys deal with these walls all the time, but the appreciation of, of what we have is, we have, we wanted to make sure that the site plan is going to work for you guys, and that, that we're not coming back in. We've now got a brand-new wall, and you guys say, wow, you know what, this site really doesn't work, we don't really like it, we don't, we don't like the traffic, or we don't like the design of the building, or whatever. Because frankly, it's a significant, we've already spent about 25,000 bucks just in geotechnical so far. So really, you know, my guess is, we're looking at at least that, if not more, to finish it out.
That's the way it goes.
And, and it won't happen in two weeks. So I think, can, can you give what those dates in, in March would be?
Well, in March, the first meeting's the 7th, the second meeting's the 21st.
The same as the 21st, okay.
Yeah, March happens to be shaped the same way.
I'd go with the 21st if I were you, but it's up to you.
We need at least that. And then we won't write continual letters saying we need more time, because I picked up on that.
Yeah, we lack patience, we just vote against it.
So, so what are you asking for, March what?
March 21st.
21st, that's what I said.
And so in the meantime, what we will do is I, I will work towards all departmental comments, including Mike's, and we'll go ahead and get that wall designed.
Make sure that you, you put the fire hydrant in and show it on your plan for the fire chief.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's on my requirement, that's his. So you need a motion to.
Mike, do you, he indicated that he wanted it south of.
120 feet or so south of the existing hydrant, so keep going towards you.
Yeah, so he wants to come away from the front, okay.
Yes, he doesn't want, he stops out there, so he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to have his truck stopping in front of your entrance, is what he's worried about.
When they're fighting fires up in the high tensions and all that.
Reserve that one for you.
If you don't move the hydrant down, they're going to go to the hydrant, and it's going to invade into your site.
He's not blocking your traffic.
Yeah.
He's actually trying to do you a favor.
So it should be, should be south of the gravel drive.
Should be right around.
In the middle of the curb cut right now.
It should be right around oil.
South of the gravel drive.
I would, I would agree.
It should be right around oil.
Okay.
All right.
No, no.
On the plant.
You're looking at the wrong place. It's over there.
I was being, I was being facetious to Pat.
You may, yeah, you may not be able to.
I was being facetious.
Maybe it's on yours that you're going to install it.
All right, so the applicant's going to continue this to 21st of March.
Okay.
You don't need to take a vote on that.
Yeah, to acknowledge the.
At least seven copies.
Motion by, motion by Babe, seconded by Lena, to have the applicant.
Continue.
Continue this to the 21st of March. Any further discussion here or not? All in favor? Propose unanimous? Thank you, gentlemen, have a good night.
All right, you too.
We have a ZBA special variance for, for Dill street. The applicant requests a special permit to build a 16-by-32 addition to the existing single-family dwelling on the subject property. The property is in a regularly-shaped, non-conforming lot, so any changes could require a special permit. However, because the proposed addition is to be within 16 feet from the front property line, a four-foot from the side east property line, variances are also needed. Larry is recommending favorable to the ZBA.
I'm recommending, well, that's all right, yeah.
No, you said it's favorable.
Oh, yeah, roll them on. Never mind. Never mind, it's late.
You know?
Yeah, well.
You want to change your mind now?
No.
Okay, so it's favorable still.
Yep.
Is the applicant here? No? Okay.
Sorry, I blew up.
No, 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 I just. What are we doing, office space here? That detail? That's the house. That's the house. It's gotta be close to, uh, Allegretza, right?
Couple down. Couple down.
Gee, I think it's probably like two down.
Yep. That's what he said, two.
They need a, they need a variance as well as a special permit.
No, it's exactly two, you're right. Well, it's a pleasure of the board. He needs his top letter.
Think about those shit.
Give me a minute.
What's the? The highest addition dimension, 32 by 16. Four, four feet, four feet to me is awfully close.
I think an addition's bigger than the house that's existing.
It looks big.
Side yard setbacks, 15, we're going, we're going to, we're going to four. I, I make a motion, send an unfavorable recommendation to the ZBA.
Motion by Joe, uh.
Doesn't matter anymore.
Seconded by Babe for an unfavorable to the ZBA. Do I have any further discussion on the unfavorable? Hearing not, all in favor of the unfavorable, opposed to the unfavorable, unanimous unfavorable? May I have your top letter, please? We have a ZBA variance of 15 East Street. The applicant requests a variance to buy the subject property in the two lots. The property is a conforming 16,000, 500 square foot compliant two-family lot in the RA zoning district. The existing two-family dwelling is non-conforming only as to front yard setbacks. The property is essentially flat with no attributes, uh, of the land itself creating a hardship. Therefore, Larry's recommending unfavorable. Mr. Pettenari.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Ernie Pettenari. Um, I'm here tonight with, um, Domingos and John Gomes. They are the trustees of the Realty Trust that owns this property. Um, this property is the old Solazi Homestead on East Street. Um, I did not know the Gomes brothers before this, but they were referred to me by Attorney Murray. Um, I've done some investigation. The Gomes brothers have rehabilitated properties in Milford and they own them and they manage them and they rent them. Um, and they're what I consider to be credible and real, responsible landlords. Um, when they bought this property, one of the things that they obviously saw, and if you look at the plan that Gary Aaron Hellman did, you'll notice it as well. Um, the house that exists on the property exists on only one half of it. And Larry's recommendation is right on the button. It is in fact, non-conforming only as regards to the front yard setback. It's too close to the road. The house is well over 60 years old. Um, and it's my suspicion, although I haven't done a full title on the property, that when it was built, it was built on one lot and the other lot was contiguous to it. Um, having been in common ownership all these years, obviously it would require a variance to allow for the use of the lot to the side yard of it. So what I did this afternoon is I pulled out the, um, assessor map that they used to find the abutters for us. And I'm presenting that to you. And all I did was I took the block that the lot is on and I colored in every lot that has a residence on it that is smaller than the 8,000 square feet that would have currently prevailed as the minimum. And I also colored in, um, all of the lots that are multifamily. And I colored in on the pink lots, um, the lots which are in excess of 8,000 square feet but which are otherwise non-conforming to, to current zoning because of the multifamily current rules. Um, as you see, the lot in question is the biggest lot on, biggest residential lot on that block. Um, the division of this lot into two, um, would create two 8,000 square feet lots. And the Gomes brothers are not asking for permission to build a duplex, which would even be common in that area, but rather they're looking to build a single-family house. And they intend to manage it as part of their rental stock and to manage it as they have, as I've said, responsibly manage all their other property. I think Larry's technically right. I think that, that we can't make an argument that the shape of the lot creates a hardship. But I do believe that this lot, when it was originally laid out, was more than one residential lot. I think the addition of a modest single-family house on the second side of this lot can be done in such a way as to conform to all zoning except width and frontage. And consequently, I think as a practical matter, um, it, it's a good way to, to again, maximize the use of the property and to minimize whatever would be otherwise a financial hardship on them. Um, that would be the argument we're prepared to make to the zoning board, um, Thursday night. And that would conclude basically all I'd have to say to you this evening.
Ernie, to your point, I don't think this is uncharacteristic of other things, that applicants have come before this board previous for the same purpose, that pre-zoning, these lots were orientated in such a manner, and to your point, looking at the arrangement of this, it's almost pretty concluded that that's probably what the intent was way back when. If it wasn't for records at Malon, it could be easily obtained.
Yeah, there, there's no doubt in my, this is, this is the biggest vacant piece of land that's left, and it's the side yard of a 16,000 square foot. Well, that, that's my argument.
So, so some of these, um, how, how old are the rest, the rest of the neighborhood? It's the same thing. All those neighborhoods were, you know, 60, 70 years old, is that correct?
Most of the houses are old, but surprisingly, there's several houses that have been built with variances. And there's two sets of duplexes that were condoed on lots which are, in my opinion, very, very small.
Right, right. Well, that's the thing. I mean, 8,000 square feet is small.
Well, but 8,000 square feet is the minimum zoning. Is the minimum zoning for the single family. This, this lot that results will conform. There will only be the need for the variance on the duplex that exists because it will be now a duplex on an 8,000 square foot lot, which again, is not uncommon in the area, and for the front yard setback, and for the second lot, only for the width and the frontage. Otherwise, the single-family house can be built within all the setbacks. And 8,000 is the minimum lot size in that zone. So it'll be a conforming lot except for width and frontage. And but for, if it were in single ownership, it would be a fairly easy variance to get. I, I understand Larry's point, and I'm not here to argue with it.
I know, I know that.
Right.
No, that's our job, but that's neither, you're done, sir.
Yeah.
What's the pleasure of the board, cause as we're getting into the bewitching hour.
I, I, I sort of agree with Larry, I don't see the hardship.
That's mine.
It is, it is the zoning, it is the current zoning, and we, we've changed it a number of years ago and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't meet, so I.
Doesn't meet it.
Make a, uh, motion, we send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Motion by, uh, Joe, seconded by John for an unfavorable. Any discussion on the unfavorable? All in favor of the unfavorable?
Aye.
Opposed to the unfavorable? Four in favor, one opposed.
Okay.
I was opposed.
Thank you very much.
I didn't see the problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck at the ZBA. They're all yours, can I have your letter?
That's the last page, too. So the one I gave you earlier. No, no, I'm saying if you wanna use that.
Have a good night.
Good night. Good night, Ernie.
All right.
Okay.
Retail marijuana establishments, here we go, take four.
Well. Just quickly, based on our, our prior conversations, I adjusted, uh, a possible amendment so that it would show, uh, adding, uh, the same definition, which is the, the all-inclusive definition out of the, the new law. Uh, but we changed the, uh, the use schedule chart so that it would show, uh, the, uh, medical marijuana establishments allowed, uh, in, uh, all of the zones with the caveat, and that there's, that's why there's a new, uh, footnote 29, that in the CA, CB, and CC zones, uh, it's only the marijuana retailer, not all the rest of that stuff in the definition, that would be allowed in, in the commercial zones. Um, all the combination of uses would still be allowed in the industrial zone, uh, IA, IB, and IC. And those are the zones where the, the current, the medical marijuana, um, well, medical marijuana is currently allowed in the IB and the IC zones. But this would sort it out, um, so you could distinguish, uh, between the two. And this would be the easiest way to say, if it's retail only and not any cultivation or testing, uh, or the rest of that, uh, list, uh, then you could do it in the, in the commercial zone. I think that's what you were.
That addressed my, yeah, that addressed my concern.
Same thing here.
Yeah, looks good.
So, uh.
I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I don't have any issues with this. I, I don't know how much we wanna push this forward at this point, per se. I mean, I, I'd almost like to wait a little while and find out what the actual regulations and what the town's going to do in general. I mean, there's talk that the town may or may not allow it in, as is, so I, I.
Well, in, in terms of the timeline, depending upon when they decide to call, uh, the annual town meeting, uh, then there would be a timeframe within that, uh, six months leading up to it where you would need to hold your hearing. So, uh, to the extent that, uh, you know, we could kinda gauge that, my thought was that whatever we came up with here, uh, that seems a relatively rational approach, that you notice it and, and start the process. Then by the time you actually have the hearing, um, if there's new information, then, uh, you know, the motion for that article at town meeting could, could vary slightly.
Are you looking, are you looking at it for the next town, this town meeting coming up? Or are you?
Awesome, I don't agree with that.
I don't agree with that either.
I think you also need to get a feel from the selectmen in terms of how they're planning on issuing licenses and so on and so forth.
Right. Well, but in, just in terms of trying to, to balance all of those, you know, differing boards and authorities.
That's fine.
There, there's a question, uh, I think I know the answer, but, uh, that doesn't mean people aren't gonna push for it, that if our bylaw doesn't address this now, and if we haven't posted a notice that starts this process saying we are gonna address it, somebody's gonna try and argue, well, it's a retail use, I wanna do it on Main Street.
Well, in theory, you could do that, cause it wouldn't be a retail use.
Well, but it, without, without these.
With a special permit.
Well, this wouldn't be. And that's what I'm saying, is that whatever.
Well, I understand, but there's also an argument too, Larry, that I don't, we seem to be very proactive trying to get bylaws passed. And sometimes we could, uh, take a pause and perhaps benefit from another community and how they've addressed it. But again, if, I, I'm less concerned that someone's gonna come in and try to tell me that this is retail use and henceforth, let's open it and have fun. That's, but again, anything's possible.
Yeah, I was looking at it more in terms of, aside from whatever this board decides the article should say, that, uh, if you don't start the process and post a notice, you're still susceptible to those, uh, potshots, so to speak, at bylaw by saying.
Sometimes if you create a bylaw too, you welcome the man.
Would we be able to start the process but, but go to special town meeting?
Well, whatever hearing you have between now and the town meeting can't be more than six months prior to that town meeting. So if you wanna wait till the fall, that's fine.
I'd much prefer to wait till the fall.
Right. I'm not sure what that's going to get us in terms of information from anybody else, but, uh.
Well, I mean, I, at, at that point, I would feel more comfortable that maybe we're not gonna get anything. But then I, then I believe that this board has, has a purpose that they need to act at a certain point. Right now, I don't, I don't feel that, that, that we need to be taking the front end of that. If no one else does anything by then, I, you know, there's a realization that come next, the following June, I guess it is, as of right now, somebody could put in an application for a license, and we should be prepared for that. And depending on when town meeting is, that, that doesn't make sense to do it in the following town meeting. So I believe special town meeting is the time to do it. And if nothing's happened, to go forward at special town meeting with.
Well, but licensing aside, somebody could put in a site plan, playing devil's advocate. Somebody, and that's why I was hoping, uh, to set a hearing sooner rather than later, is to protect the town. Somebody could file a site plan. To do this in a CB zone right now, irrespective of licensing or anything else that we may think might be appropriate, uh, and we'd be in a position to say, no, you can't do that, our bylaw doesn't.
If they, if they wanna, if, if they wanna do that.
Put it in the IB.
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't say anything. If they wanna do that, if they wanna do that, I think they're pushing the course of pushing the town to say, we're not gonna grant any licenses, which we have the right to do. So I don't know that anybody's gonna do that. I mean, if they want to, that's fine, but, but, you know, if they decide that they wanna put it in and they wanna put it in next to School Street Market, I, you know, I think the town would, would turn around and probably say, you know what? We're not gonna grant any idea. So I'm, I'm, I'm willing to take that, that shot. And, I mean, that's me. I mean, the other board members may have a different idea, but I, but I, I think fall town meeting is the, is the time to do it.
Okay, that's.
Uh, to see where, where the other boards go, if, if there's anything from the board's department.
The state has put a moratorium on sales.
It's 18 months, but they haven't, they haven't said that you can't apply for, you know, I don't, I don't know, they've, they've said you can't apply for one, knowing you can't sell for 18 months.
Right. See, I'm talking about zoning and site plan approval or zoning and special permit, land use approval versus licensing and anything else that anybody else is gonna regulate. I'm just talking about.
Just do me a favor and send this tentative copy to, uh, Rick for his, uh, distribution to the selectmen so that they at least understand what we're, what we're thinking about.
Uh, you know, from what I understand, a week or so ago, the, uh, selectmen was supposed to make some kind of, uh, notice that the planning board and the selectmen should get together and meet with this, or, uh, I thought that was gonna happen.
I, I don't know the answer to that, Lena, so I just asked Larry if he could kindly send a copy to, uh, to Rick and tell him this is in terms of what the planning board might be thinking, the distribution to the selectmen, and let them, you know, if they have concerns or they, or they have questions or they have input.
Where are they, where are they in this?
I can't speak to that, so that's why I'm asking.
That's what I'm asking you, where are they? They should have some response.
Just send, just send them a letter on my behalf and sign my name.
Can we, can we have this, so the CA and the CB has a special permit, just, other than permitting?
You could, yeah. Do it, do it as special permit for ZBA or here? Oh, no, not ZBA.
No, here. No, this is the elected board, this is the one that should have the. I got no problem with the CC, but the CA and the CB, depending on where it was, I think it should be a special permit in those, in those two areas. You can do the CC if you want.
But you'd still wanna keep the footnote limiting it to retail only.
Yes, absolutely.
Only retail for that, for that zone.
Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah, that makes.
All right. Well, at least now, whenever the, the other meeting may occur, uh, we've made some progress in terms of getting our heads around.
What about the cat, what about the chickens here?
Oh, the residential animals? I just, um, on the, on the last one, the residential animals, I just changed the chart to reflect what we talked about the last time. And that amendment would show zero, uh, the O for the RA zone.
Who had been in the RA?
We add goats to this or just chickens?
No, it's residential animals as already defined.
My sister was already ready to move her hostile.
All right, anything else?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Babe.
Last, last, uh, meeting with the, uh, the Al Midas property. We made the guy who take the stones out of the.
Yeah, we, it's, it's not part of the, the.
It's not part of what?
The landscape plan. Stones are not.
Oh, I remember that, yeah.
We've got buildings here, a lot of buildings with stones in them.
Yeah, but he took everything out, no grass, there's no planting.
No, the stones, the stones are still there, he took everything out, but the stones, we made him remove the stones and put in.
Grass.
Black mulch or something.
And did he?
It doesn't matter, what's, what's wrong with the stones? Stones is a landscaping material.
But was there any planting in the stones?
No, we wanted to put the planting in, right. But we made them take the stones out, we shouldn't.
Stones aren't included, I don't think, in the bylaw. To be, to be honest, if you want long-term success of plants, marble chips are not great to put in a landscape area. That, we can do whatever we want, we can change them, but there is a reason, and stones are not a great landscaping thing. Considering people don't keep up with them, we probably shouldn't allow them in other areas. It should be, it should be emulsed in.
Well, the thing is, if you're building, if you got a building, you got a wooden building, you put the mulch in the landscape areas up against the building, it's a fire hazard.
Right.
Again, we're, we're telling the people they gotta put landscaping in. We shouldn't be telling them, you gotta put this stone, that stone, this mulch, that mulch. It's like we're telling them to put red mulch instead of black mulch. I just don't think.
I would have been happy if you just planted grass.
Well, but that was, that was one of the options, but.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I would have been happy to plant a grass.
But the stone, the stone was there, I just happened to see, I looked at.
He did the stone.
But the stone, he did it illegally, so I mean, I really don't feel bad.
The former, the former owner did this.
I don't know who's who, but I'm just saying.
The stone was there, again, it's a landscaping material. I don't see the problem with leaving it.
There was enough weeds growing through that he should have just taken it away and planted grass, I mean.
Again, I, if you go to the new building, or the new medical building, that's all stone there.
I have no idea, I don't pay, I don't pay that much attention. I'm watching the car in front of me because I can't trust anyone.
I can't trust anyone.
It's just, I just think we just get a little carried away with what it is.
Again, I think sometimes people are their own worst enemies when they go and do it on their own. I don't, I tend not to feel sorry for people when they go ahead and do stuff like.
But if they take it out, they put stone in, and again, you gotta put the, they took the plantings out. If they changed the plantings and left the stone there, it's not a problem.
I wouldn't have minded, I think to that point, Babe, if they had stones as a true, like, landscape buffer, but that's not what they did, they removed everything and substituted stones. I don't, I don't think there's an argument that that's landscape, I'm sorry.
I agree, I agree, I agree 100%.
If you're asking, can we use stone as a material in addition to flowers, trees, grass? Okay, that's a different argument, but that's not what we, that's not what he did down there.
But we told them they had to take the, we'll do the plantings and take the stone out, and I don't think.
Well, because stone's not calculated as a proper planting. I'm just saying. Again, he took out all the grass. It's landscaping.
It's a, it's a.
Landscaping. It's a hard, it's quite a hardscape, I guess.
Maybe we need to look at it, Babe, I'm not, I'm not denying that, but I, I would be highly against allowing marble chip in a landscape area.
Yes, yes.
You want to put in other types of stone and allow that, that may be, but I know if we go, you know, if we go and talk to landscape architects, they're gonna tell us that nothing's gonna grow in that area after a while, you're gonna lose it all. So I got no problem looking at, looking at the bylaw going forward, that's fine, if you want to change it the way it's written, because right now we don't allow it. There's probably other people that have done it, and they're not supposed to, but, but it just happens, but I got no problem with that.
Again.
Why don't we look at it, Babe?
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta be looked at, because, again, if you have a wooden building, you got the black mulch there, it's a potential fire hazard.
That's fine, if we, if we want to open that up and redefine landscape areas to the materials, I, you know, we can do that. Larry, if you want to take a look at that, I mean, I could, I can talk to a couple of landscape architects at work and see, you know, in terms of material, I got no problem doing that and look at it. I, I've had discussions with them before in terms of the marble chip, but, yeah, I don't think other type of stone is.
I mean, marble chip is something that kills plants, absolutely.
You shouldn't put that in there.
Well, we know how hot it is, and once they go, trying to get people to go back and replace them later on, we've got, we've got no shot at that, so.
But again, you know, like I say, they put it in the building, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful job they did, too.
Yep.
Motion from Lena, seconded by John, to adjourn. Thank you, good night.